Good evening. It is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board. The Planning Board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments requires a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on senior group permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony will state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel 9. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. According to town bylaw, meetings are audio-recorded. If anyone also intends to record, kindly notify the chair. Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we can start with a review and approval of the minutes. There's two sets. One is from February 4th and one is from February 18th. Any comments on the minutes from February 4th? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 4th, 2025. In a second?
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then we'll move to the minutes from February 18th. Any comments on those minutes? Alright, seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th, 2025.
In a second?
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, next on the agenda is submissions of new plans. Are there any submissions of new plans? Seeing none, we will move on to old business, to the Fisher Estates definitive subdivision for the purpose of correcting a scrivener's error on the definitive plan. Leanne, do you want to give us some background?
Absolutely. So we received a plan on Thursday morning, and probably a little prematurely put it on the agenda. And we thought it was just a scrivener's error based on the arc of the definitive plan. It was off a little bit, so when they went to actually construct the roadway, it was going on to the neighboring property. So it needs to be amended so that it remains on its own property, and it was a little bit of an error. But as we planned for the meeting on Friday and started to do the prep work, we noticed that the decision said that any change to the definitive plan must have a duly advertised public hearing. So we are going to table this, and the applicant is going to submit all the applicable fees. We will advertise, and then we will bring it back before you to correct the error on the plan. And Sam will be here at that point to explain from the engineering standpoint on behalf of the town.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Alright, so then we'll move to the next agenda item. Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision for the purpose of requesting a partial release of surety. Note that this is not a public hearing. There has been a continuance requested to April 1st, 2025. You can open the matter up to PJ Snyder, if you'd like to come.
Sure.
Yes, so. And now we have new audio. It doesn't matter. We have new audio now, so you don't have to unmute people coming up.
Alright, sure, fine. I'm PJ Snyder. I'm just here to request an extension to July, I mean, April 1st, because Tom Bean is not here. He's on vacation.
Okay, great, and he is the engineer?
He's the owner of the subdivision.
Oh, the owner of the subdivision, okay. Alright. Anybody want to... Any comments on that? Okay, so then I'll just take a motion to grant the request to continue.
I make motion to... For a continuance on the matter of Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision for the purpose of requesting a partial release of surety to continue to the April 1st, 2025 Planning Board meeting.
In a second?
I second the motion for the continuance.
Are you all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed, abstained? Okay. Thank you. Next agenda item is a proposed zoning amendment. The public hearing is being continued and remains open. Leanne, I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation for us?
Yeah, I thought we would just start to go over some of the changes. I apologize, but I was not at the first public hearing. As you know, I had COVID and was in quarantine. So unfortunately, I missed that, and I think we had a greater audience at that point. But a lot of those folks that came to the meeting did come and meet with me in person to go over and share feedback also. So that was great, so.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad you didn't come to the meeting.
I think everyone is. I don't think anyone really needed to see me on Zoom that day either. So yeah, I thought I would just kind of run through. I think there's still a couple of questions that we have related to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Some things that, you know, we need the board to make a decision on with which direction we're going to go. But I'll kind of just, you know, for the public hearing, kind of go over the changes we're proposing for both bylaws, and then we can have a discussion with the public as to what we want to see moving forward. Okay, so as you know, we're going to do proposed changes to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. We're discussing language for permitting a second ADU, if that's the direction the board would like to go. Proposed changes to the merger bylaw, and then we can take questions. So as you know, this all came about with the Affordable Homes Act from August 6th. It changed the way we can regulate and define accessory dwelling units. They became a protected class in Massachusetts. So their 900 square feet are under, and they are by right in all single-family residential districts. So kind of what changed from our current regulations to what the state's imposing, we can no longer regulate owner occupancy for either the ADU or the primary dwelling. We can no longer require a special permit or any other discretionary zoning relief for the use or rental of the accessory dwelling unit for the first one. We can require one parking space for an ADU, and then there's... The second part of that is language related to if you're an MBTA community or if you're in relation to rail, subway station, ferry, et cetera, which doesn't apply to us here. So we require one parking space for an ADU. So then, as we kind of go into some of the revisions, this would be the new definition for an accessory dwelling unit. It's a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping and cooking facilities. So we can still regulate setbacks on the lot, and we can regulate the size of it. But we can no longer regulate lot size in relation to whether or not she would be able to have one. So they're by right for each single-family home. So an ADU, what does that mean? It's an accessory dwelling unit. It can be constructed within a single-family, attached to a single-family, or as a completely separate structure. So it could be a remodel of your basement to meet safety standards for an accessory dwelling unit. It could be a rehab of your garage to be able to have an apartment in there. It could be a single standalone cottage. It must conform to all state regulations still. It's just the local ones that have changed. So state building code still applies, Title V still applies, which is the SEPTIC, and other sanitary codes. And then all other lawful provisions, you know, that we can regulate under zoning and Conservation Commission, Historic District Committee approval, all of those still apply. Dimensional requirements per Section 2600 shall govern the creation. 2600 is our dimensional table, so that really just lists out lot coverage setbacks, basically where you can place it on your lot and whether or not she would have enough lot coverage to place, you know, a standalone building, or whether it might necessarily need to be within the single-family home. As we mentioned, parking, so at least one off-street parking space in addition to that required for the principal's single-family dwelling is required. The principal dwelling and the ADU, the ADU is accessory to the principal dwelling. It should not be severed in ownership. It is supposed to be sold together. So that is something that we could still regulate within the bylaw. And then neither the primary dwelling or the ADU can be used for boarding or lodging, commercial uses, including short-term rentals or seasonal rentals. And then no occupancy of the ADU is permitted, other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months, which I think is one of the things that we still wanted to talk about, the language for that. And then we can kind of move on to the opt-in option. So this is another area that we needed a little bit more discussion on, was whether or not we wanted to allow a second ADU for each dwelling by special permit. So this board would be the special permit granting authority. There would definitely be a lot more conditions that you could place on it that aren't listed here in the bylaw. You could require owner occupancy. I don't think we could change the size with a special permit. I think the special permit, the definition of what an ADU is, and that those size requirements would still have to be complied with. And it says that we don't use variances for these, so I think that you would just be looking more at site design and protections for the neighborhood when it comes to permitting a second ADU. And that's the ADU one. I don't know if you want me to move on to lot merger now, or should we stay on ADU until whatever we prefer?
Right, yeah, maybe ADU and just bucket them?
Jeff had a question.
No, I was going to suggest we stay on ADUs and give us...
Yeah, that makes sense.
And ask you questions, and then get those results out. I do have some questions to put on.
And I ran through that very quickly, because I mean, you're all pros at this point.
Could you, on the discretionary zoning, it was an earlier slide, could you further define what's... There it is. No, go back, go back. I did. It says, "You can no longer require..." ...or other discretionary zoning approval. So can you further define what's meant by that and give us an example?
So for zoning approval, typically special permit, I mean, a variance wouldn't apply here. What's interesting is they use that verbiage, because we are allowed to use site plan review, which would be another form of discretionary zoning approval. So it's contradictory in nature, because we did learn from council that we are allowed to do a site plan review process.
Okay.
And there is no other type of zoning by special permit, variance, site plan review, comprehensive permit. I mean, that wouldn't apply, so.
Okay, I've been... Yeah, okay. Well, you've answered my question. I couldn't think of an example, and I... You answered that, okay. The other thing you... I think I just heard you say, so on the second ADU, if we decide to do a second ADU... Did I hear you correctly? Let me restate what I think I heard you say. The second ADU would also fall under the 900 square foot?
Yes.
So when you held the public hearing, not, it wasn't public hearing, when you held the public session at the Center for Active Living, you spoke about what was called an XL ADU.
Correct.
So is that a no now?
So an XL ADU would have to be completely separate bylaw. So it's something that I think that the board should consider, and we should probably discuss this summer.
But that's not...
But it's not what we...
Not limited to the 900?
An ADU, we could craft that ourselves as to what size we want. So basically, with this one, we have to comply with the definition that the state gave us, including if we permit a second ADU. We can have different discretionary conditions attached, but the framework of the size would have to remain the same for the second. What I had spoken about previously was our community would really prefer to have 900 square feet of habitable space, which is what they're accustomed to and what really makes them more livable, especially if we're seeing downsizing and elderly moving in with accessibility and wide room of hallways and bathrooms and all of that. You kind of almost need a little bit of a larger footprint. So it's something that we should discuss and perhaps bring up this summer to do, and like, almost like an addendum to this, where maybe by special permit, you could get a larger ADU. But it would be slightly different.
Okay, so if I could just finish, I got a couple more questions, and then I'll finally turn it over.
Just a jump off.
So, just for clarity, for me, is... In order to comply with the state, we have to have an ADU bylaw which allows for one unit. The state's going to allow, if we choose, to put a second ADU on that lot, if we choose to bring that in. We're not required to bring that in, but if we bring it in, we must still comply with things like the 900.
Yes.
Okay, of total space, not just several, okay? And then in addition to that, if we wanted to, we could have a third item, I use that term, which is this specific-to-us ADU bylaw. And you had referred to it as XL, and someone that came to the public hearing, you weren't here, they also recalled you and they asked about the XL, because they were literally looking for something larger. So we could eventually get there if we wanted to. The state doesn't limit us.
The state doesn't limit us. The only... So the way I try to frame it in my mind is, this one that came down is the protected-class ADU.
Yep, okay.
And if we want to do something different, we can absolutely do that, as long as we have this one.
As long as we have this one, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And the last question I have with respect to ADUs right now is... With respect to we, on the books, have an ADU bylaw. My understanding, and that's what I'm trying to understand if I'm correct. My understanding is that we can no longer enforce it or enact it, or... So if someone came to you today and said, "I want an ADU," you cannot use the one that's currently sitting there.
Correct. I thought you said you could use it. I was told, because I was looking to use that one, and I heard it was still available until... So you could, as currently drafted, get the protected class, but that that bylaw is still in effect, that it hasn't been revoked. So that was the understanding that I had.
Our town council said that we cannot enforce our bylaw once we're in noncompliance with the state. So that we are not... So if someone comes forward with a building permit, we cannot regulate it per our current bylaw, that we should go off state guidelines or ask them to wait a couple months.
So the bylaw, the ADU bylaw currently with the habitable space and the size is not available for special permit?
No, so what happens in zoning, and it's a clause of good faith, that's referenced in Massachusetts general law. Any permit that was submitted prior to the, like, or a building permit, whatever type of permit that was submitted prior to the first duly notice public hearing advertisement is vested with a certain period of time that they can move forward with that project. Anything after it's been noticed, we have to look at it if it's a good-faith effort or if it's, you're trying to catch a clause before it changes. So it is referenced differently depending, so it's kind of case by case.
Okay.
But the general rule is, you know, once you kind of start this process and everyone's noticed, and specifically in this case, because it actually changed at the state level, that we are no longer able to enforce our own regulations at this point, and we should fall back on those regulations.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
The next part of my question is, so given that is the current state of what we have on the books, the state one, what I'll say is, what the state is... Is in effect. I can't remember the exact date, but it was like, just like a month ago or something.
Yeah.
So now, if I come to you and I want to do an ADU, it's a town allowed me to move forward with an ADU as long as it complies with what the state has officially recognized, even before Sandwich has officially recognized it?
Yeah, that's what we've been advising residents, yeah.
Okay.
Is that they can fall under the state regulations for it.
Right, and as we write our new bylaw, which is going to replace our old one and comply with the state one, it may have something additional. I don't say that will or won't, but something that is allowed, but is in addition to what the state did. So, you know, there may be something. And that, if we were to decide that, and the town votes on it at the town meeting, and it goes to the state, and the state attorney general's office, I think that's where they go if it approves it, and then, you know, 90 days to eight months down the road.
Yeah.
This thing finally comes in. It's not till then, though, that you in the town could say, "Oh, no, no. It's more than just the state. You have to have this other one provisioned too." Is that correct? So we're going to be in a... Not a... We're going to be in between where we got some things that might be currently already approved under our existing. Then we're going to move to just the state one, and then somewhere down the road, we're going to move to one that's a state and maybe something else if we so choose to do that.
And what's tricky with zoning is, once it's approved by the attorney general's office, it's retroactive. So it bounces right back to May 4th or May 5th, town meeting date.
It's retroactive to the...
To the town meeting vote.
Interesting. So if someone is moving forward before it gets approved, but after that date of May, they could get trapped, because all of a sudden now they have to meet something they didn't have to meet previously.
Yeah, so we've been having very open conversations with anyone that's looking to apply, to say, "What is... What is the timeframe? Is it something that needs to happen immediately?" And kind of just run through the scenarios with them, which is very confusing, so it's hard. We've even had attorneys call and say, "How are we handling this?" You know, "Are the land use attorneys?" So we are trying to just make it as clear as possible, and a lot of people want to hold out to see if we'll do a larger size eventually, that they would prefer that. So we're kind of just giving people their options and then just letting them make the choice themselves as to which direction they want to go, because it's all very up in the air until you finally get that attorney general.
And you just... You just brought one other question in my mind, which I apologize. I thought I was done. Let's say we fast-forward to the future, and we've got a zoning bylaw that's complying with the state, and then we've got this, which I'll refer to the term that we've been using loosely, which we have a zoning bylaw, which is the XL. Would I be able to do an XL ADU and not have the by-right ADU on the property? I would be. So I can choose them. I don't have to have a by-right first.
I think, yeah, I think if you... So if we didn't go through... It would be its own standalone bylaw. So if we did an ADU XL, it would just be a town of Sandwich bylaw. And you would be crafting it, and I would recommend it as, you know, you could only have one of those.
Yep.
And then, you know, you're choosing that one to do. Like, the protected-class one is a separate, smaller unit. It kind of has a different... You know, and maybe we would love to get rid of our by-right accessory apartment at that point, because we're kind of starting to add a lot of different styles of development.
Exactly.
We would start to look at it, but that would be completely separate to kind of this.
Okay.
And I think that maybe we wouldn't be allowing all different kinds on one property, but maybe just one of the types. Just depending, I mean, on, then obviously, if we do the opt-in option or not.
So you're saying that the extra-large one could be the first one?
Yes.
And not be in violation of the state mandates on this?
No, all the state mandate says is, "This has to be within your zoning." It doesn't say you have to utilize it. It doesn't... So it's going to be up to the property owner to say, "Is this one what's best suited for me?" And that's why I've been kind of telling people, "If you have time to hold off, you know, write letters to them, attend the meeting. Let them know that you would like them to take this up, and we'll reintroduce it in the summer." And I think we've gotten enough feedback at this point to reintroduce it in the summer, especially while it's all fresh in our minds, and maybe create an additional bylaw that people could utilize too, that we could maybe present at special town meeting. But, I mean, that's obviously all up for discussion. Does that make sense?
Yes. No, you did a great job explaining it. Thank you.
Did you have?
The question that I had was about the clarification on the two, essentially looking at them as two entities and protective, and then adding a third that would be completely regulated by the town, not the state. So Jeff, actually, your follow-up, answered that for me. But I guess, so in thinking about that, if there were an XL option, let's just call it the XL option, and somebody chose to do that first, I don't think we could then do any conditions where we could prevent somebody from having a by-right ADU on the property as well.
That's a good point.
Run into some problems with...
That's a good point. It could be... And maybe it's something that we could look at. I mean, when the time comes to draft that, we can definitely look at that. Maybe the XL is by special permit. Maybe we can ask at that time, you know, "What limitations can we make it owner-occupied at that point if we're allowing it in that direction?" Because everyone is, yeah, they have a right to have the by-right ADU. Like, that's the right. It's a protected class. So then, anything in addition... I mean, we may want to look at lot size for the XL. We may want to look at owner-occupancy requirements. We may want to look at a lot of different caveats on that to protect from just getting too dense or really kind of hear what the residents want to say about that also.
Yeah, I think that's going to be an important consideration. And so on that thought, I would suggest maybe we also look at other towns, if they are already fashioning some bylaws to have such an XL. I don't know.
I think everyone's just trying to grapple with this one first. I haven't heard of anyone really looking into making additional changes to it. I did speak with a planning board member from Martha's Vineyard, and he was discussing it and saying that it was, you know... He had seen my presentation and had follow-up questions, but he was... They actually did theirs a little bit differently. They didn't get rid of their existing ADU bylaw. They just added the by-right one, was the direction they were going to go in, so that the existing still remained. So the... They could afford to be there.
I had a question on the second ADU by special permit. Because the language, and I emailed this to you, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate that I'm concerned about making sure that we have effectively workshopped every possible scenario that could happen, because there was sort of a footfall in the state regulations that it seems that it would be then up to us to make that determination. But these are... And it would be by special permit. The second ADU would be by special permit, so it would be coming before us. But I just want to make sure that we are kind of on top of it before it happens. And what that is, is, and I'm going loosely based on my memory, because I didn't get a chance to review the state guidelines again today. But the by-right ADU being up to 900 square feet, no more than half of your primary dwelling square footage, if you make it a part of your primary dwelling, in other words, it's not a separate structure, does that then reduce the square footage of your primary dwelling? So you have a 2,000-square-foot house. You make the top 900 square feet, top floor, its own ADU. Does that then reduce the square footage of your primary dwelling to be 1,100 square feet? Because then your second ADU by special permit would only be allowed to be half of that, which is 550 square feet, which is basically like a shed in the Home Depot parking lot. So I just feel like, it's, I know it's important. We heard a bunch of feedback from the town, people that came to the meeting, that this is something that they would like to see. But I just want to make sure that we, as a board, have really thought it through to where we make it attractive and it's used, and it's not just something that we're putting on there, and then people are kind of like, "Oh, well, like, this doesn't really work." And I don't really know if this is not, this isn't really the time to have that conversation, but...
No, absolutely. I think like, as part of these discussions, when we ever look to interpret a section, we go back to see what the spirit and intent of what you put forward was. So if there's a consensus as to how that should be interpreted, it would be great to happen here in open session, because we'll, we log about and say, "This is what the interpretation is. This is what it's supposed to be." And we just make sure that we convey that as best we can to the community as to what the intent is during the annual town meeting that we have. And I think just like the consideration too, if we're going to go towards an extra-large ADU, maybe we don't do the opt-in option right now, because it's kind of going to potentially give it. Or maybe we say, "If you've got a special permit for a second ADU, you don't qualify now for an extra-large one." Like, we should probably kind of figure out what we want to see on the properties too, because otherwise, we're kind of opening the door to potentially three on a property.
Now, you mentioned a by-right accessory apartment.
So we have a bylaw, a by-right accessory apartment that's allowed for every... Very similar to this, but the lot size is 10,000 square feet and above. It's a non-rental unit, and just as we start to expand, it seems like it's becoming less and less necessary, because nobody's really electing for it anymore, because the ADU is larger. This is only 800 square feet. The ADU is larger. You can rent it. I think it's just, if we get into that question of, are we mandating it has to be rented? Or is it discretionary rental? Like, you could use it as a guest house, but if rented, it has to be for 12 consecutive months. I think we haven't fully aligned on exactly what we want to do for that. So kind of like I had a, those were kind of my outstanding questions, was that some direction from the board on whether or not we're mandating it was to be rented, whether or not we were going to go with the opt-in option. And then, we had discussed previously parking in the paving, so I spoke with Sam today. And I guess the engineering kind of wants it to be slightly more discretionary. They don't want to mandate that every space has to be paved, because it's really site-specific, depending on the grade and slope and how the drainage systems are functioning in that area, and if there would be runoff. So he proposed a little bit of language that just says, you know, that parking shall be provided in conformance with the town's driveway regulations. Surfaces shall be paved or stabilized and non-erosive, as otherwise approved by the building commissioner. So it kind of, it makes it clear, but a little bit more... Um, so it kind of, it makes it clear, but a little bit more site specific in case there was a, an area of town which, you know, should be paved in an area town which maybe we'd be fine with some type of gravel or, or shelves. So that's for your consideration.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Would you like to come and speak?
Oh, yes.
Okay. If you could sign in on that sheet.
Sure.
That table, that would be great. Just your name and address.
I, I'm sure I'm beating a dead horse here and a lot of the questions that I had for the commission, and I'm happy to see that you're already addressing this evening. I'm going to go ahead and make some public comment because when I was speaking with Leanne earlier, she said it was important for you guys to hear from people in the community.
If you could just let us know your name and your address, that would be great.
My name is Jack Fekero. And I've lived at 16 Oriole Lane for over 30 years. And, um, I, um, want the commission to, I want the planning board to understand that, you know, that the difference between 900 square feet of gross floor area and 900 square feet of habitable living space is significant. I'm at the very early stages of planning a ADU for my elderly in-laws. And I've engaged an architectural designer and we've been looking at this problem. And I did this for my own parents when they were alive, built a house for them in Falmouth. And so I know what it, what kind of space requirements there are. You need a nice wide hallway to bring a wheelchair through. You need open areas. You want the single floor living, of course, but you, you need to have a reasonable amount of space and that's for elderly people. But, you know, there's a whole other segment of our community that is young people and young families. And even a couple living without kids in 900 square feet is a tight space. So I'm one of the people that's kind of stuck in limbo right now because until this issue gets resolved, I can't advance my project. And I'm fearful that this will go a year. If it, that doesn't get addressed until the next town meeting. Now I understand it's too late for this town meeting. But I would hope that the planning board would be willing to, uh, support an article that could be taken up at a special town meeting sometime over the summer months. So that people like me aren't losing a, a year of, you know, eligibility for my elderly in-laws. And that's, that's really all I wanted to say this evening.
And what was your address? It was?
16 Oriole.
Oriole, okay.
Like the bird, not the cookie.
Yeah, okay.
Can I ask you a clarifying question?
Sure.
Just to make sure. Uh, so the, I think you were aware, the, the 900 is specified by the state, not by us.
Yeah.
And when you speak about an article, I think what you mean is you're speaking about bringing forward in addition to the by right, an additional ADU that one could have that's governed by special permit by this board.
Well.
Because the, the by right state, we have to have that.
Yes, I understand that.
And we can't change the 900, nor can we change the 900 in a future special town meeting either. Unless the state changes it, we can't change it.
I think you can expand it. I, Leanne, correct me if I'm wrong, because I hopped on that call that they had when they were talking about this. And I believe that they were talking about, you can expand the by right allowance so you can make it broader. So if you wanted to change the definition of the by right from gross to habitable, as long as all of the, you know, you could make it more enticing for people. You just couldn't make it more restrictive. So would it be possible to perhaps look at the bylaw to make it broader?
Uh, I was told no by council. We were told we have to adopt the state's definition. That because at the very onset of this, when, once we knew we were changing from habitable to gross, we knew this was going to be a problem. Um, because we have permitted a lot of ADUs recently and since we ever changed it in kind of 2020, 2021. Um, and habitables worked for everyone. So I knew that that changed. So that was one of my very first questions that, remember when I used to redline the document? That I specifically asked council, can we keep a definition of habitable? Can we not take their definition? And she said, no, you have to be consistent and take it. So that's why if we wanted to do a separate size, we need to do an additional bylaw. And maybe we don't call it ADU because it's can be confusing. Maybe we call it a different type of dwelling, but.
I would just be surprised because I just feel like if the goal is, is to have affordable housing at the very minimum by right, this is what's allowed. But if you wanted to make that bigger and it was by right, it would even, it would push the cause even further for affordable housing. You know, I would be surprised that they wouldn't allow you to broaden it.
It's different when it's listed under protected class. So there's certain state changes that, um, you can make less, you can make more restrictive, not less. There's certain like thresholds. But when you're talking about, there's not that many protected class items in land use law in Massachusetts. So there's only about seven and this has now been added. So
Okay.
you're, you're supposed to adopt it as written. So merger is another one that you have to adopt as written. Because we would have loved to have slightly changed the merger doctrine way back in the nineties as to what we would kind of see. And we've never been allowed to. It's something the zoning board has asked us to take up, probably five times within the last 10 years. Um, to ask us to try and just see, can we reduce this anyway? Um, but for certain things, we're not able to.
Okay.
Um, and honestly, I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I just, I just listen to whatever council says, but I ask those questions.
Yeah. Okay. So the only way to broaden it would be to have another additional.
Yes. And then that's where XL came from. That's what she said. You would need to do another, perhaps ADU XL.
Okay.
So I'm not, I'm not.
I had another, I would finish questioning. Can I just, can I finish? So, so it's, it's, as you understand, I wanted to make sure you, uh, we were, Paige, it's an additional bylaw in addition to the by right.
Yeah, as I see it, it's.
I wanted to.
Jeff, we'll let him speak as well.
As I see it, it's a, it's a two-stage process. I'm not a zoning expert, um, but as a layman, my understanding is it's a two-stage process. First you have to get into alignment with the state act. That would be accomplished at the regular town meeting in May. The next step is to adopt a reasonable, uh, bylaw amendment, uh, under the sandwich zoning bylaw that would allow for a, a modest increase. And I, and I almost see it as bringing our local bylaw into alignment with what it was prior to the state act, which was 900 square feet of habitable living space.
Yeah, that's possibly associated. But where I was going, because I wanted to help you, you made a statement earlier that said you didn't want your project on hold for a year. And I was trying to walk you through the timeline. Unfortunately, you are going to be at least a year because, because we are doing it in two steps. That is, we're doing the by right first at May. And then at a future date, we will do a, if we have the hearings and if there's agreement and if it moves forward and, you know, the likelihood of a special town meeting is probably the fall. That's typically when they fall. So we're talking, that's the earliest we could get on a town meeting. And then if it gets approved at that town meeting and then has to go to the state to be approved, that could be another six months to, to longer.
Their timeframe is, uh, three months. We're supposed to hear back within 90 days. Um, there was a couple of ones, strange ones we had recently where they kept asking for extensions.
Yeah. So my point is, we, is that we can, we will do the best we can.
Sure.
But it's, you're not going to be looking at something you can do in three months.
No, no, I wasn't expecting.
And you said a year, and I could see it being a year before all this gets sorted out.
When I said that, what I was referring to was the year between town meeting, regular town meetings. So what I'm, what I'm hoping that the planning.
I wanted you to leave.
Was advocate for a special town meeting where this article can be discussed. So we don't lose a full year.
I understand.
Yeah.
And you're looking really for more of a size, right? So you're focusing on more gross and habitable, the definition. Is that right?
That's the only concern for me. And I'm not looking to build anything much larger than, you know, 1,200 square feet. 1,100 square feet would probably do it for me. But the habitable living space is, is a problem.
Okay. And you can't fit under the current bylaw. He wasn't able to get onto that bylaw that we have now, just with the timing and everything.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm sure I'm not the only one.
Yeah. No, I'm glad that you came forward because it is really helpful to us when we're talking about it to have the feedback. Because, you know, we're doing the best we can and then if we're experiencing it, that actually does help. So thank you for sharing that. It is helpful.
Yeah, very welcome.
So, so I'm confused about something. The by right, which is new and we need to adopt. Why does that mean we have to lose the ability we already had?
It really depends on, on which way we would have done it putting forward. So when it, when the way it came down to us was that, you know, you have to adopt this. So basically I just redlined the current version was how we did it was we, we redlined it. It gets very confusing when you have multiple different types of ADUs. So I think we should name things differently once we're finished with this ADU. But basically we, we took the existing ADU bylaw and we redlined it to make it in compliance with the state. Um, because of course at that point, we hadn't received all this community feedback. And then when you advertise, um, what we're going to do, there's only certain changes that we can do at a, um, public hearing. So I mean, it's really up to you. We're like, we can slate it and, and not move forward with it and, and retry for fall and keep the existing. We still need to make changes to the existing and.
We can't use it and it doesn't really.
No, because we don't really have anything else. And the, yeah, it just.
So it's kind of.
It's procedural. Basically it's a procedural thing. I mean, there was, like I mentioned, Martha's Vineyard said, we're making tweaks to our own and then adding the by right one. Like there was different ways to tackle it. But every community tackled it slightly different.
And just noting, in fact, the intent was to give people an option by right, not to limit or the options they currently had. That wasn't the intention.
No.
You're saying, but somehow procedurally that's ended up being the result?
From redlining the original ADU bylaw, yes.
And then so, then so what's the fastest path to having another option through a special permit? The quickest route for us to come up with.
I mean, a new bylaw and then have the town. And it would either be, and if we did a second ADU, it has to be with the same parameters or we can do it however we want to do it?
Well, you should be able to do it however you want to do it. That's why like maybe we wouldn't call it an ADU. Maybe it's a tiny homes bylaw that's 900 habitable square. Then it'd be something we'd, we should name it differently because we should be differentiating between the two. Um, and that was kind of the fear when I first started going through it was, because it gets so hyper complicated and there's so unintended, so many unintended consequences, that it was so much easier just to take what we had existing and revise that one and then move forward with any other changes that we may potentially need down the line. Um, because I, I mean, I think we all knew that this wouldn't be the end of the conversation when it came to accessory dwelling units.
Well, I think the big concern we had back then was also that we weren't in compliance with the state. So that was a huge concern for the town. So say again, what, what is the quickest path to having, um, a special permit option in, in time?
Would be to, um, reintroduce zoning language to this board midsummer. Um, and start those conversations and get it before a special town meeting. There's no guarantee that we will have a special town meeting. Uh, I've worked here for, you know, about seven and a half years at this point. We've had one every year, but, uh, but one. So I mean, but it's, it's never a given that you're going to have one. It always just depends on if there's enough business to call a meeting. And sometimes it's in the fall. Last year we had it, um, in January.
Well, you know, when you're dealing with parents in their mid nine, or in-laws in their mid nineties, six months makes a difference. Really does. Nobody else have any other questions for me? I'll excuse myself. So I appreciate, you guys are all volunteers and I, I know that. I appreciate the effort you're putting in and, um, I'm.
Thanks for speaking. Yeah, thank you. And there were, I wasn't at the previous meeting, but I did see other people kind of echo some other concerns about that too. Like, you know, if you're a young couple or if you're, you know, elderly or have certain physical challenges that you need accommodations, how do you do that? There is going to be further litigation because of the 900, um, you know, limit with the state. But, um, yeah, I mean, I don't, I absolutely agree with your sentiments there.
Well, thank, thank you all for listening to me.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Any other comments on this topic or shall we move to merger?
So I have a question.
I have questions.
Yeah, Eileen and then, yeah, just, and then Jeff will go.
I just, um, had a question about, um, the usage like 4133E. Um, that states that no occupancy of the ADU is permitted other than by lease for a minimum of 12 consecutive months. We had talked before about, you know, some people will want to just build these to have parents age in place or have children and their families come and, you know, switch arrangements or whatever you might have. And, um, this language seems, um, like it would prohibit that because.
Or they could get a lease. It doesn't, it could be for, it doesn't have to be for mark, fair market value, right? Is that the, the lease for the 12 months wouldn't have to be for a fair rental value, would it?
No, we don't get involved in how much you, you rent.
And they could just have a lease.
What, was it our intent that they would have to have a lease?
I mean, is that what you're referencing, right? The 12 months?
Versus.
Right, right. Yeah.
So we had previously kind of discussed that, um, our existing ADU bylaw, when we adopted that, when we got rid of the guest house provision. So our interpretation internally has always been that, um, we make them sign an affidavit that if rented, it is rented for 12 consecutive months. Um, but we don't necessarily mandate that you have to rent it. But I, that was kind of up for discussion with the board. I don't know if we ever got to a consensus about what we wanted to do with that.
And is in that mandate, are they looking for, um, rental for a certain, you know, market rate, not the market rate, but like an affordable rate or anything like that?
We got rid of all affordability provisions.
So if it was to be rented for like a nominal amount for a 12 month period, that could technically still qualify and not be in violation of anything?
Oh, absolutely. Whatever a homeowner wanted to rent it for themselves. But I think to Eileen's point, she's saying that if you had guests staying the summer or you had parents visiting for two weeks, can they reside in it without kind of breaking any rules?
Yeah. Okay. So less than 12 months?
Right.
Right.
Right. Right. And for some people, it might be a little burdensome to have to, you know, maybe they would feel they have to hire an attorney to have a lease made up and so forth.
I agree with you.
So is there some way we can add language that, um, just doesn't prohibit that type of activity for it?
Like an or. Or, or like as, as we said earlier, if rented, if rented.
Right, right. Just so it leaves the options open. Yeah.
So something.
Uh, just had another question. Um, if we were to try to permit the XLs, would we then like put, uh, obviously we'd have to put some type of a, um, size limit on it?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so I, I think when we go through that, we can, we can really start to look at, well, is there undersized lots? Do we want them to be able to have a, an extra large ADU? I mean, like extra large, I mean, they're still not that large. Um, I think the 900 habitable, um, space would, would probably be sufficient. And but of course that's for up discussion, but we could look at, okay, well, our existing ADU bylaw, we didn't allow them on lots smaller than 20,000 square feet. Um, you know, we can look at setbacks. We can look at, we can regulate a lot of things because it's, it's not linked to the state as long as it's, it's fair and it follows zoning laws, um, land use laws from Massachusetts. But there's, there's a lot of latitude that we have to create what we need for our community.
Like what would be a, like a reasonable percentage of a lot size or?
Yeah.
Because right now it's what, that they can't be larger than half the size of the.
So it's 900 square feet or half the size of the square footage of the original home, whichever is smaller. So if your home is an 1,800 square feet, you're getting half the size of, of whatever your current home is. If you're hitting the 1,800 square feet, then you get the 900.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, that's going to be a whole other big discussion with lots of details of it. Yes. Yeah. So I think the earlier we started this summer, typically we start zoning conversations in September. I think we'll start them maybe towards the end of June this year. Um.
Yeah. I mean, for someone who has a 3,000 plus, um, square foot home, you know, that, that could be a 1,500 square foot ADU in the yard. So it's, I mean, that, that's kind of, I mean, that's like the size of my own home, you know, so they, they would get rather large.
Yeah. So I think we could definitely impose restrictions on what we would want to see. And we'll do the same effort we'd hear from the community and, and craft what we would really want to see. So I just added from discussion, when rented, no occupancy of the ADU is permitted. I have it in red. You know, just like to have each have a discussion so we can get guidance on, on kind of drafting the final language. If that is amenable to the, to the committee, to board or not.
Yeah. I mean, that was going to be my question because I know we got feedback from people who attended the last meeting that there was concerns about the lease arrangement. So as much flexibility we can have in that, um, the better. I mean, I think we heard that loud and clear from people who came that night to talk.
Anybody else?
I, yes.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
So you spoke to the comment made by Angie with respect to the pavement or non-pavement and so forth. There was also a discussion we had previously around requiring a, why am I drawing a blank? Landscape plan. And in the logic behind that was that unlike other types of accessory buildings that people can put on their property, an ADU is going to introduce additional habitants, you know, people, additional car traffic, it's going to introduce lights, potentially music, other sounds and so forth. And by having, what I was looking for is having the ability in there for the town to be able to work with the individual applying for a permit to do an ADU, the ability to work with them to use what I'll call green reed landscaping to help diffuse any sounds that might now come into the into the neighborhood, to diffuse any lighting and so forth. You were concerned when the, when you spoke with the town attorney that that could be a stumbling point for us because it's a requirement that we don't currently have on on building a home. And it may or may not, right? But the the reason for, my reason for bringing it forward was, just as I just stated, I asked, I have a personal experience, I have a friend, a a couple that that an ADU has built next to a mountain sandwich in another town, and exactly that happened. You know, their backyard, which they had set up and they sit in, you know, like, a lot of homes on the ADU, they put those motion sensor lights. So now when the people are walking around that that ADU, the light shines and it shines into their backyard. And then the other thing happens was, the reason we sit on the backyard was to listen to the evening, you know, birds and sounds and so forth, and now they hear music and people talking and so forth. It's a balance, right? I mean, that that comes with living in neighborhoods and so forth. By allowing for landscaping, we could help diffuse that. And it's interesting because at a plane, when we do that, we've done it in two other applications. One is when we looked at, I look at cottage communities being converted to condominiums, we've worked with them to see that landscaping is introduced to help diffuse that currents of those condominiums. And we also do it when we look at ground-based solar arrays, that we work with them to see that there's some kind of greenery, greenery, greenery kept on the edges so we can help diffuse both the look and the sounds and so forth. And it doesn't necessarily mean more cost. A lot of times, in fact, a lot of times when we've worked with it on the solar array, it simply meant leaving trees and bushes that were already there as opposed to cutting everything out. So it's not an expense necessarily. So I would like to see us have some provision in there that allows the town to work with someone that came in for an ADU on putting in some type of greenery in some way to help diffuse the impact of that ADU now being present in a situation where it wasn't before. Because that ADU is going to present lighting and it's going to prevent sounds. And and green reed was a great way to help diffuse that. And I, you know, I I'd like to see us find a way of putting words like that into this thing. I think currently, the draft wording we have does not have it in there. Is that correct?
It's it's under forty-one thirty-three F and I stated, applications that include a landscape plan are preferred. So it's it's ambiguous, so the hope was that we'll request it, but we're not mandating it. So when we go for site plan review, we can request and kind of see. I was thinking if we partnered it with our lighting bylaw and partnered it with, you know, the vegetative, 30% should remain in vegetation, how people start thinking about that and how that would, because 30% of your lots was to remain vegetated under construction projects, then if we could kind of encompass it into those areas, that I could try and get across the intent that you're that you're trying to, that we're trying to make sure that we have some safeguards in here. I don't know if that's helpful or, I mean, it is slightly ambiguous. I just know as we go on with these and we start to see court cases, if this is definitely going to evolve and we're definitely going to eventually end up getting more say, I think. But we don't want to create.
I was under the impression, the last time we talked about the landscaping, that if we mandated it, we'd have a problem.
Yes, so the 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 problem is, is, you know, obviously with town council, this is the first of its kind of, there's no case law on it. So it's all speculation. So she was speculating at the time and it kind of, there was a little bit of a discrepancy between the two because we were mandating a paved parking spot and we've never done that, and then a landscape plan. And she was okay with the paved parking spot but not the landscaping plan. So, you know, it's 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 very, it's it's hard to know at this point is the problem. Until we start to see case law come out of how we're defining it and start to see when people are submitting their their bylaws to the AG's office, what gets accepted, what doesn't get accepted. We're all just in this little bit of the of the guessing game right now as to what will be accepted.
I I'd like to see something stronger than what you did, but we'll end up with something. I think it's necessary. You know, an outcome that could happen is that we have nothing in here, so ADUs are built. The situation that I'm familiar with exactly happens, we hear about it through either at public hearings in the enterprise or whatever, and we're never able to get an XL ADU passed because people say, no way, look what happened when you did this one, you know? I got lights in my backyard, now I got this, music going on and so forth. So that's, you know, I I think in, it could be, you know, we, it could be a reason why we want to try to keep a balance here. And as I said, it's not a hypothetical, because I know of an actual case where, and and they are, you know, they're going to the town and they're trying to, they're trying to get it addressed. Unfortunately, there's no rules, be it bylaws or other laws and so forth, that are being broken. So it's really just trying to get the neighbor to work with them and so forth after the fact, which is very hard to do. If you can do it before the fact, it's, as we all know, it's so much easier. So that's all I'm looking to try to do here. You know, if that's the best we can do in wording, then, you know, we'll just have to decide if it's enough or not. I I would like to see something stronger than that, as words around landscaping. And again, a landscape plan is nothing more, can be nothing more than the back of an envelope. So, you know, the caution, as I understand it from the attorney, was the state said, don't put anything that causes undue costs or something, it was, you were driving up costs, but it was, it wasn't, you couldn't drive up costs, it just, it couldn't be extreme or something. I forget the word you used, and I didn't bring it tonight to read it. So, you know, we're talking about something, as I said, many times, as we've done it, you look on the board, it's it's just remaining, leaving in place, a lot of shrubbery and trees and so forth, they're already there. So it's not like an expense to put in stuff. And landscape plans are being drawn. And I understand that no case law, it's new, it could tie to top. I think downside, though, if we don't do it, is it can also be issues.
Just playing devil's advocate to that, but why wouldn't the person that's being inconvenienced by whatever was built, build a fence or put up their own shrubs? If we're not really allowed to mandate, place any restrictions?
So what we've done is, the the ADU introduced, just, I'll play devil's advocate, you're coming. So the ADU, which is by right, gets built. And I now have lights shining in my backyard and I have music and I have to draw costs to put up fencing to, and shrubbery to block it out. Why, why, you know, why is that a a better solution than asking the individual who's putting the house there, building the ADU? Why isn't it better to ask them at the time of construction, you know, to build something? It's, it's the same reason why we don't allow water to flow off your property, right? You know, why do we let erosion occur and then you make the person that's getting erosion fix it? You know, that's what you're doing. You're asking them to fix the lighting and the sound because it's something somebody else did. I I don't see that as a, as a right solution. To me, a right solution is, you know, when you're reviewing a plan, you address all issues, potential issues that are realistic and, and, you know, this is a realistic issue where an ADU could be built and introducing lights, sounds, additional car traffic, which is disruptive to the character of that neighborhood and all what already exists. And we just got to balance it. So just ask me to say, okay, you've got to put the fence up and you've got to put it, you've got to spend the money.
I'm not disputing the additional car traffic. I'm just asking you to sort of unpack the landscape portion of that because really, right now, I could build something within 10 feet of my property line and play my music without building an ADU and I'm inconveniencing my neighbor, apparently.
You can.
Right, so I don't know that, I I just don't feel like that would make it through the Attorney General's office if we were to sort of overly burden our bylaw.
So the term used was overly burdened, and that's, that's, well, the words are too, you can't overly burden. And I don't see this as overly burdened. Also, because we don't require it now, doesn't mean as we learn, we shouldn't be, because when we write, for instance, in this XL ADU and call it something else, I I I suspect, you know, one thing we could do is just just pick up the current ADU, give it a different title and introduce it in the fall town meeting and we're done because it's already, it's already been through everything and the town voted for it and it's fine. But I know we're going to make changes to it because we've learned since we did it. That's, you know, it's a learning process. So the fact that people can build homes now, just a home and not an ADU and put it on the, I live in a neighborhood, this, you know, this is in the town sandwich. I I I, we have neighbors that, police are there, I won't say Conley, it it goes up and down depending upon time of year, but sounding like, because we we were on a lot, lots, very small lots, so you're very close. And and we, and it, and I know the police get frustrated because they don't want to come. They they got more important things to do than they have to come when there's complaints. So the fact that we allow it, there are issues out there. So if we have the opportunity to address it in future bylaws, I think we should address it. And we should, should, you know, it's it's only ADUs we're addressing now, but maybe we will address it with something else in the future. So the fact that, you know, it's an issue existing and it's not addressed, doesn't mean to me, I think we've, if we have the opportunity to address in the future, we always should.
How does a landscape plan mitigate noise necessarily of like a loud, you're saying you're experiencing?
It helps to fuse sound and light. So trees, bushes, shrubs and so forth will help to fuse sound and light when they're placed. And it's why we do it with, we've done it in two, like you said, Board Polity has done it in two cases that I'm familiar with. One is when we've had cottage communities get converted to condos and when we do ground-based solar arrays, where we permit those. In both cases, well, you're permitting in both cases, we work with them to put green reed on the boundary because it 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 blocks some of the sound because you get these fans and so forth that go on and it views and any lighting they might have for safety reasons, security and so forth around it. So green reed will help. And it it does, it's amazing, you don't have to put very many trees and shrubs and so forth. You can do a great job of diffusing light and sound. It's very effective. It's why you never hear a tree fall in the woods, in the forest.
I just put up what town council's response was. So when I asked for it, I submitted it as part of the building permit process, her response was only if the town requires a landscape plan be submitted for a single-family dwelling, which we do not. So that was, that was the language. Again, it's it's subjective as we don't know what will be approved or not. I'm happy to revise the language if the board wants to to take that up. For this one, that's, let me see, landscape plan. So currently, just read the applications that include a landscape plan are preferred. We can, you know, extend that to say, you know, a landscape architect plan should be submitted with your building permit application. It does not require you to hire a landscape architect. Like, if we could try and phrase it so that it doesn't seem like it's going to be overly costly, we could give it a shot and see if it's, see if it gets through. If not, we risk getting the whole bylaw mandated back to us, that's the only thing. But, you know, if we're potentially going for another revision in the fall, it's not the end of the world.
I think what I struggle with on a lot of these points, and it might not be right thinking, is even if they submitted a plan, is there any basis for us to reject what they want to do based on the plan? Because it's a by right ADU. So it's like, it just seems like inviting a lot of discussion and quibbling about something that we couldn't ultimately make a requirement about anyway.
Well, you're basically authorizing town staff to, you know, on behalf of that neighborhood, figure out what the best landscaping is for that area. None of us are landscape architects, but, you know, we'd have some knowledge, each of us in different departments as to, you know, what could be beneficial, what might not be. It's hard when the abutter is not part of the process. Like, it's it's easier when we have these hearings and you get to hear from both sides and then you can kind of adjudicate and negotiate what should be done.
Could you put something that require a landscape plan? Well, is this requiring notice to abutters to?
No. But do we have any right? So, I mean, what I don't, I guess what I understand is that if you, if you look under like the CMR, it does give what I think interpret as a lot of flexibility to municipalities to have, as long as you're not unreasonably restricting the creation or rental of an ADU that's not short-term rental. And then there's additional language that sort of discusses the reasonableness. So I feel like are we giving, are we putting in our bylaw too much? Just too much broad stretch for people to comply? But Massachusetts regulation does actually seem to allow us to make some restrictions?
It's it's pretty much the same answer. We don't know what they're going to allow and not allow with this. All they came out was was this model bylaw with these rules that are vague. And until we start to see them go through, so I erred on the side of caution when I drafted it with the the comments that I made to council on certain things that I knew we would want to see. And then she's just using her best estimate. But what's so interesting is every land use attorney you meet has a different opinion. And when the building commissioner goes to the Southern Eastern Massachusetts Board of Building Commissioners every month, he comes back with completely different instances of what, you know, attorneys there are telling them that the ADU bylaw will do for communities versus, you know, what the planning experts are telling versus. So it's it's so convoluted right now that I really just based it off as close as I could to a model bylaw that we got from the state that really followed without pushing the envelope on would this or would this not pass?
So what's the worst case scenario? If it gets rejected, we still have to allow the by right, so you're not any worse for the wear, right?
Well, it's just from what what Jeff had referenced, so it it makes it difficult. So if people go under the state regulations and then you're still working to become in compliance with these regulations, then if we add additional, say, we see that we can add landscaping plans and other regulations to them, but then they're retroactive, like, we're coming to a homeowner halfway through the process saying, you now have certain, you now have additional steps that you have to.
And I wonder if it's better to put more in at the beginning and then kind of whittle it back versus the opposite. So like, if we put in landscaping plans and it goes in, that's kind of what was, what we proposed initially. And if it gets rejected, well, it gets rejected for the landscaping plans and then you resubmit it without the landscaping plan or in a different way.
But it still takes time. This all takes time and any grants I apply for the summer, I won't get.
Into the grant.
So there's a.
So that's the other.
I mean, there's there's that downfall too with with other state grants that we get.
Is it possible, so say the bylaws are silent on that, but there's language in the state law about it and an understanding evolves over time and we can just point to the state law? Do we have to repeat those things in our bylaw to make it enforceable?
Yes, it it depends. It it really depends on what portion of the state bylaw it's in. Is it something we have to adopt? Is it something that's enforced? So that's a very hard question to actually answer because it really is really dependent on what we're talking about. Another way we could do it is we can create requirements within our site plan review process and mandate those.
Is part of the concern on the part of the town council is our exposure because we don't require it on a single?
Yeah, so so the way the state worded it and then just going through, I've attended three of their sessions now on how it's supposed to be interpreted. They want it interpreted as anywhere that you have a single-family dwelling that's by right in your district, this can accompany it. So anything that we mandate for the single-family dwelling currently, we can mandate for for the ADU, like the 30% vegetated state that we have, like our lighting bylaws, any of those bylaws still apply. But that we can't regulate anything in addition to our current single-family dwelling. That's how they explained it to us. And then just like between the state office, like the the EO HLC and the Attorney General's office, I mean, we've had different statements coming out of both of those entities that jointly wrote it, so.
Do you know if any other towns are doing any kind of landscaping provisions, or any other, have you talked to any other planners about their bylaws and compared them?
Yeah, there's, there's just, there's, there's two trains of thought, there's, there's the thought of, we're gonna do a bylaw that suits our community and see if we can fight it, and then there's the ones that say, we're just gonna comply and continuously update it as we start to get more latitude. When you're fighting it, you're, you're, you're putting yourself at risk for, for grants, I mean, that's, that's really just the scary part for us, because it's not just the planning office, it's also, you know, the town manager's office, it's the engineering department's office, the DPW, they get a lot of grants every year. And if you have to tick a box that says you don't comply with all state requirements.
Is there a way to make it not retroactive, can you say, you know, going forward, that's just under that protected class, kind of, you can't modify?
That's, that's for every single, every single zoning article that we ever do, they're all retroactive.
What about like legal nonconforming, like, could you kind of qualify existing ADUs under the protected classes, legally nonconforming, so then you don't have to go back? And, because like, you know what I mean, like, if you're retroactive, retroactive to what, is it just the ones that are actively?
No, so, that's, you can't use nonconformities that way, so like, when you're voting at a May town meeting, you're conforming under a certain bylaw, and that bylaw, it's known, that's where the duly advertised public hearing is, like, it's on the property owner, homeowner, developer to understand the rules and regulations of the town, so.
When you say retroactive, I'm just trying to figure out.
So say in August, like, when you're in August, and we get the, the green light from the Attorney General's office that we're good with this, what they didn't put in for a landscape plan, anything that we did from May first onwards would now need a landscape plan, because it goes back to the date the legislative body votes it in.
So you say when you did May first onward, meaning like, that's in process, or they'd have to go back and redo something? I'm just wondering, like, where does that line get drawn, as to when somebody has to comply with?
If they're within that timeframe, so once town meeting votes it, so I'm just using May first as an example, it's, it's, it's in effect, but it's not in effect, so, I mean, we're, we're, you have to wait for the Attorney General's office to tell you that it's lawful. Once they do that, it, it goes back to that May first date, so any permits issued within that time period.
Issued.
Yes, like, building permits issued within that time period then has to.
So if anything that's actively ongoing.
Yeah, it's not like something from two years ago that we're gonna reopen, it's like a three-month period.
How big of an impact, I think this was kind of what I was trying to figure out, like, how big of an impact could any subsequent changes have? Just to kind of bulk it up as we go.
Yeah, and then I, I guess it's just like, if it's denied at the Attorney General's level, and then we're, we're going through again, I mean, we're, that's just another whole other can of worms to, I wouldn't even be able to give you a clear answer tonight on how we would deal with that. For a denial, while people are still applying under the current state regulations, and then getting pushed out again, like, it's just.
Okay.
That would be a mess.
So it sounds like the, the lean is to go towards a clean bill that, or a clean bylaw that'll get passed. And then kind of revisit it as things start to happen, and seeing what latitude we might have. And we'll just have to kind of deal with some of those interim period permits, so maybe if we know, we know it's getting presented, that which is, because you're communicating with people when they apply now anyway, so it would just kind of continue that conversation. And I don't think, and unless somebody feels differently, I don't think that any changes we make would be monumental, it sounds like they would be more like a tweak. Like, you know, like a landscaping plan doesn't, it's not supposed to be unduly burdensome. So the idea would be is it wouldn't, shouldn't unduly burden whoever's permits ongoing either.
And I think we would, if, if it remains somewhere, you know, in this vicinity of language, when we do our site plan review, we will be asking for it, and we could maybe require it under our site plan review process, like, we have that process seen internal that we require for, for applicants that want to come in for commercial establishments and other items. I guess I do just get nervous that if it's, if it's not passed, how we, how we deal with that, and how we deal with our summer grants.
Yeah, what the impact's gonna be, yeah.
I certainly don't feel strong enough about it to risk not just getting.
Neither do I. Yeah, and you could add it, and so if somebody has an ongoing permit, and they have to add some shrubbery, I don't think it would be.
We can accomplish that through the site plan.
Maybe, yeah.
If we get a lot of pushback, we can't mandate it, because it's not.
Right, right.
We can encourage it, we can encourage, we can try and utilize the bylaws that we have, and talk to them about, oh, you gotta keep thirty percent lot coverage, or lot vegetation, should you think about, you know, where you're gonna construct this, and how that would impact your neighbors, and keeping as much greenery trees around that area as possible. So I mean, those conversations can occur, but to Jeff's point, it's just we can't really enforce it without having it within the bylaw.
So this is gonna come before us again in a final, so we're gonna do all this now.
This is your final, yeah, so, I do kind of need a.
I just wanna point this out, and open to others' opinions about it, but when you say when rented, the intent usually behind when makes, it, it sort of has a connotation that it's going to happen, so I'm just wondering about changing that, so that it sounds more like if, so it sounds more like as an option, not when rented, meaning it has to be rented.
While?
While rented. And maybe I'm being too much of a stickler about it, but I, I think just down the road, let's just say, in five years, you know, when rented, sounds like the expectation is it's gonna be rented.
Yeah, I think the expectation is that they, they should be rented, and then just gives a little bit of latitude here and there. You know, the purpose of the bylaw is to have more rental units as possible, so I'm nervous about if rented, because I think that's going too far in the other direction of, oh, you really don't have to rent this. I think it, it should be rented at some point, they should not be sitting vacant. But I think if there's an instance where it's not rented for a year, and grandparents come to visit, you know, we're not going to have an issue with that.
Yeah.
The intent really is, it, it should be rented at some point.
Mostly thinking about, like, you know, older parents moving in and not, really not.
Oh, and we, we would consider that rented, like, I mean, you, a dollar a month, you know, I mean, that's, we see that all the time, and people ask us that questions, and we say, well, we're not asking how much money they're giving you, but you, you should have some type of an agreement with them.
I see. So we just went full circle on that a little bit. Yeah, yeah, because now there's an agreement, and we were talking about how we didn't necessarily want people, I mean, I, I could understand you just write a piece of paper, you can have this for the calendar year for a dollar, you don't ask for a copy of the lease, but you, you are signing an affidavit that, you know, when you're renting it, it's by lease, we don't ask for that, but it's, it's something that you're saying you do, so, if someone's staying in it long-term, I mean, it should be rented, that's, that's the purpose. Yeah.
For whatever amount of money, that's, that's up to the homeowner, whether it's their parents, and it's a dollar, or it's whatever, and it's on the back of a napkin.
So it would just be a quick little note, it doesn't have to be a formal lease agreement.
No, yeah.
They don't even need to turn over anything.
No. The only time we would start getting involved is like, if we got complaints, we would investigate. So if there was excessive noise coming from it, we would look, how's it being rented, is it on, I mean, the short-term rental websites, like, what's going on at the property, that's when we would start to look.
Well, that was a really good clarification, because until then, I wasn't thinking there was an expectation that it be rented, that was, I thought it was. I mean, the, the purpose of this legislation is to promote, like, affordable rentals to people, and increase the amount of housing.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't keep it as, as a guest house in perpetuity, it's, it's supposed to be rented. It's just like any of those gaps, I wanna make sure that there's like a little bit of latitude for someone to be able to utilize it. If they're having trouble finding a renter, if they had a problem with a renter, you know, there's, there's so many different scenarios that can happen, we don't wanna house rent too much, but it should be rented for the majority of its life.
So, for the second ADU forty-one thirty-four bylaw, it's gonna be a motion whether or not to bring that forward to the select, and then to bring it at town meeting warrant. Now, just to kind of revisit our last conversation on that, we were gonna do the public hearing to see how we felt, whether or not it was time to bring it forward. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for that, so kind of turning to everybody, that's what I recall from our conversation, you know, wanna see where everybody is with that.
And the, the only participants here were speaking in favor of having that option.
The second.
The second ADU. No one came to speak in opposition.
There were, what, two people that spoke about being in favor of it, so it wasn't a big crowd that was here in favor of it.
In the sections, I don't have the book, the sections, one, thirteen thirty and forty-one thirty shall apply for the second ADU, what was thirteen thirty?
Thirteen thirty is the special permit criteria, it references noise, nuisance, hazard congestion, detrimental impacts to the neighborhood. And then section forty-one thirty is this, all of this accessory dwelling unit bylaw, so, you'll, they still have to fall under all the rules and regulations of the current accessory dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and then they have to prove that they're not creating nuisance, noise, hazard, congestion, or a detrimental impact to the neighborhood to, to you for approving it.
But that's special permit, so it's still gonna come before planning board.
It will come before the planning board, and then just, you know, as I always say, the way the statute is written on special permits, they shall usually be granted. It's, it's a high burden to deny a special permit, so they should usually be granted under conditioned. So just, just so you know, for, for this decision-making, it's not that you can see them come before you and start to deny them.
What I'd add to that is in balance to that, risk is what you're saying, there's a risk there, because it shall, unlike a ZBA decision. And all the special permits I've been involved in, the individual coming seeking one has always worked with this board to address any concerns that people have had, so it's not, we gotta mitigate a little bit about how big a risk it is, the fact that it's a special permit creates that environment that people know they have to go before, and have discussion, and work with you, and so forth, and, and like I say, I mean, we've, we've done it for ground base solar arrays, you know, we, we, always, people always work with us, they've always worked with us on the cottage communities and so forth, I, you know, so, I, I understand the risk, because it's a shall versus the other side, but I, I had to say for the ones I've been involved in, if we voiced a concern, or someone in the public voiced a concern, boy, they've always worked with it.
But what kind of concerns could we voice, because if I understand it correctly, it would mimic the bylaw, the by right bylaw, so if we, for example, Jeff wanted to do landscaping for a second ADU, we would be restricted.
No, you could do it.
You, we could do, so we have, so where does our discretion end then with the second?
So the second, they don't have any rules or regulations around, so it's, it's, we're, we're kind of in the same standpoint, what council said to me was, you know, the AG hasn't weighed in on what this special permit looks like for a second, but I don't see any reason why you couldn't institute a lot of the criteria that you currently have, like owner occupancy. I don't know, can we create, I mean, at that point, then you're creating the two, that there would be owner occupancy on site. Landscaping, there's no reason we can't do landscaping, you, you can do any reasonable conditions, but just like all of these other requirements are still in effect, like, so, when we talk about one off-street parking, that's still in effect. When we talk about it cannot be transferred or separated in ownership, that's still in effect. So when it references forty-one thirty, it's just all those requirements are still there, but then you can add additional ones as conditions as part of the special permit.
Doesn't that makes the shall feel like a may, because it feels like you could arbitrarily almost add any condition and do away with the shall, and so it's kind of, so like, for example, as written, if we wanted to do landscaping plan in a paved driveway, and different things, we could add as many conditions as we wanted, so it almost feels like you could, you could bypass the shall, if, if you were so inclined.
You kind of have to think of it slightly differently, so you have to think that your first one's by right, and your second one's by approval. And by, by advocating for yourself to get this discretionary permit, which is what it is, you have to take on this set of conditions, they cannot be overly unreasonable. So you can't, you know, say, the, the neighbor wants, you know, a veneer wall, you're gonna pay for that, you know, I mean, certain screen, like, there's, there's, you know, you could, you get into lawsuits with things like this, like, you can't unreasonably regulate the special permit, but you can definitely regulate things that aren't listed here.
So a couple of questions on that, one is like, what, what is unreasonable, given the landscape of the protective class, you know, what is that gonna be based on? One, and two, if that's the case, and why did we go through all the effort to do our special permit bylaw when it could have been simply written in broad discretion, like, why did we add in all those extra conditions kind of built within the body of the bylaw?
Because when it's listed in the body of the bylaw, it's not a discretionary condition, it's a zoning bylaw, it's enforceable. The town legislative body voted on it, but it's conditioned in the special permit, but it's only you guys that voted on it, it can be contested at court.
It can be contested at court, so it does.
They're completely different.
So it opens up, it could open up a can of worms from an unreasonable standard, because, I mean, it sounds like we don't know what unreasonable is. So are they basing that standard based on the protective class standard, or against another standard?
So because the Attorney General hasn't weighed, weighed in, we're assuming it's on our current special permit, and all of the case law on special permits, about what's unreasonable, and what is, and what isn't, on a case-to-case basis, so we are falling back to that, as how we've always done it in Massachusetts, regarding special permits and types of conditions we can include in special permits, because the, the by right is by right, and we're not touching it. It's if you want the second one, there's a different set of criteria in order to get a second one.
And kind of to piggyback on that, say, for example, because I was, I was happy with the bylaw that we had, we spent a lot of time on it, and it was very thoughtful, and I did like it. And I'm just wondering, say, for example, with a second ADU, if we were to condition it in, in work starting June, and, and just talking about maybe making a more robust second ADU bylaw, if we were to require that the homeowner, in order to have a second ADU, has to live there, would that actually operate to, would that be enforceable, because you can't do that with the by right?
That was the question that we hadn't, I, I asked that question to council, the one I just had on the screen. Hers was, in her opinion, she believes we can, we can require owner occupancy of the second on the property, but that the Attorney General's office has not weighed in.
Oh, so owner, so you can require that they, they live in as a primary residence the actual second ADU, so you, so actually, so that might, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I, I phrase it as owner occupancy of the property, and in reference to the dwelling unit they were staying in. And hers was just, in my opinion, it's not been tested, so.
And I wonder if, yeah, if you require, maybe even, I think it'd be harder to challenge if you require them to maintain the second ADU as a primary residence, because that's a, you know, that's not real, that would be separate and aside from anything to do with the other two, but, yeah, I mean, I, I'm toggling with that discretionary piece, you know, I just, I think it's too soon, I think there's a lot of things, and I think we had a really good bylaw, and I feel like we're just kind of throwing it out when we could be applying it to a second ADU, and seeing where the first by right ADU takes us, and how people feel with, with those being built. You know, I, I just think it's a lot at once.
And I just think from the, from the feedback I've received, the concern from the community was not so much about the second, but just about the size.
About the size.
Yeah, there, there wasn't many, I know there was a, a couple here that I missed, that mentioned that they would like to see the opportunity of a second. But just from fielding calls in the planning office, and then from people talking to me after I gave that talk at the Center of Active Living, a lot of them were just much more concerned with the size of one, rather than.
And that's the other thing too, is discretion, I think that we've get into an issue, because if for one person, we allow somebody, we'd have to narrowly, narrowly tailor every decision, because, for example, if you allow a fifteen hundred square foot ADU, we would have to say, maybe we did this because it was on a larger lot, because there was landscaping, because then somebody could come up, and then challenge that discretion, where why wouldn't we allow it for another person, would it be kind of set precedent on the board that way?
You wouldn't be able to change the size of the ADU, that's the definition, so even with the second one, the definition of an ADU still stands. But yes, I mean, in some cases, someone, you may institute offense in some, in some cases, in another case, you may not institute offense and say you want our privates, but, so, staff drafts that, we know what a defensible decision is. So I mean, I wouldn't worry too much about that, I mean, it's just as long as we all work together to, to talk about, I mean, we draft special permits all the time, so.
So from a discretionary standpoint, why could we, why can we not regulate size, but we can regulate landscaping, like, where's that line?
It's specifically referenced in the bylaw.
Oh, in the.
So the bylaw's law.
Okay.
So this is when we're looking at accessory dwelling unit, this falls under the title accessory dwelling unit, it's the second one, you still have to meet the definitions of what that is, so when you're thinking about conditions, it's site-specific. So it, it, it doesn't have to be blanketed for each one, it, it really is site-specific, and, you know, there is case law on previous special permits. And, you know, there is case law on previous special permits about, you know, what's reasonable, what's not reasonable. You know, obviously, as we play without the ADU, it's a little bit different, because we haven't gone through this before, but.
Isn't the second one, so isn't the second one just basically what used to be our first one?
That, so my question to counsel was our, our existing ADU bylaw, do you think we could mandate these items as part of the special permit process? The answer was, in my opinion, yes, but the AG's, the AG's office hasn't weighed in, so.
But just conceptually, like basically, we'd just be keeping what we always had, which allowed them to have the bigger size and the conditions, the way you've always done it.
No, we can't do size. The size, we've changed our ADU bylaw, that's what we're doing. We're changing it with a new definition. We have, we have to follow that. You're not allowed in a special permit, change the size of a zoning bylaw.
And it would have to be, when rented, it would have to be for twelve consecutive months, the second ADU. So everything on there.
Everything, so say, it says at the bottom, sections thirteen thirty and forty one thirty apply. Forty one thirty is the proposed zoning bylaw. You can do conditions on top of existing. You can't change existing your laws.
Okay, and similar conditions like you would have considered in the past.
Yes, like there were certain ones we can't institute on the by right, but we could on a second, but they still have to follow the bylaws.
That makes sense. Then the third case that we hope to get to is like the XL.
Yeah.
Which would look a lot like what we just used to do.
Gotcha. Yeah. I'm sorry, this is, it gets so confusing. It's so hard to keep a logical.
So then what's, so the second ADU, I'm just trying to find, so if, if people have been voicing the larger size, the second ADU doesn't do anything for that. It doesn't even address that.
Yeah, apart just the fact we haven't got a great sampling of the, of the full community. We've only had a very small,
Right.
you know, pool of people that have, have discussed it, so I, I don't like to speak in too much general terms when we, we haven't heard from everyone, but.
For the ones that have spoken.
For the ones that have spoke up. That was, it was more size that was concerning than getting another one on their property.
And so coming up with a third one that has its own name could serve a lot of people.
Yeah, and potentially, I mean, then you would, you would end up having two anyways, because you would have your by right ADU, and then you could have a larger one unless you restrict it that, within the bylaw. We'd have to look at it. And we'd have to see if that's legal. So you potentially could do a second if we went forward with an XL one this summer. So it's kind of, it's just, it's really up to you on the direction you want to go, which I know it's, it's tough right now.
Wait, I'm just thinking, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just thinking, like, given that the, the state is so ambiguous with, like, they don't seem like they have figured out exactly what, how they want it to look. I mean, would it be more prudent to just say, okay, let's, you know, the first is by right, so let's just tackle that, and then let's see how that all rolls out. Let's see what other towns start to do and how their bylaws work, or maybe perhaps don't work with the AG's office. And then somewhere down the road, then introduce the second ADUs. Because if we ran into an issue where we allow the second ADU now, then you're giving people something and then taking it away as opposed to adding, you know, people always want something more. They don't want something taken away. Would, would that be a more prudent approach to just be, you know, kind of a conservative approach of just taking it in steps almost, you know, rather than trying to do everything now where there were so many ambiguities right now. And maybe we could learn some things from, you know, like I said, other towns. Things that worked for them, things that didn't work, what the AG allowed them to do, and it would, you know, we'd get ideas that way. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I'm in favor of adding or talking about adding a second ADU at a later date with some conditions on it, just so that we have kind of an idea and seeing kind of how everything plays out. And, and then with the consideration of doing an XL, because, you know, if people are taking issue with the size, I mean, how much impact would this particular bylaw as written have, you know, I don't know.
I don't know. I, I guess my feeling was, after we talked about it the last time, the second ADU, because we get to control what that looks like, it has to come before us, I felt more comfortable going ahead with that now. I mean, I, I don't know what waiting does for us. Because it sounds like a lot of this is gonna be tested out legally, and God knows how long that's gonna take.
Well, I think we can address the XL, and, you know, so to Eileen's point, it's you're bringing an XL ADU versus removing a second one and, you know, maybe replacing it. And, yeah, just seeing where the first one by right takes us, because it's a big change.
Well, might there be towns that are going to dispute the nine hundred habitable versus total? And will the state maybe even end up in the near future changing the nine hundred to habitable?
Potentially.
So, you know, they'd end up with a better end product at that point.
Yeah.
Anyway, so you could gear the, you know, gear the bylaw around that, that it's habitable space.
Yeah, and if they do that, then the by right one would be allowed. And then we didn't have two ADU bylaws on the books before this. So essentially, like, why would we do that now if, if in the event that does end up kind of working itself out, then we're back to where we were originally. We did have a lot of people that were utilizing it.
Oh, it was heavily utilized, yeah, ever since we did that.
If we do that, if, if we, if we do that, then if somebody comes before us and they want to build the second ADU, there's no, there's no vehicle for them to do that right now if we go that route, correct? We'd have to wait until we create a new, whatever this structure is for this extra-large one.
There never was.
Right. They'd have to wait until we created that.
If we were to create it, yeah.
As opposed to if we just approved the second one now, they could go ahead and put up the second ADU.
Well, we never had a second one. Like, why, it's not like you're expanding, you're just allowing two of the same thing that's undersized really from feedback. So what's the point? We didn't have it before.
I don't know. I guess I thought that, my feeling was, it just gives us more flexibility, and it gives people intense some flexibility too. If they want to do it, maybe it'd never happened.
I feel like the discretion, though, isn't, doesn't give you as much flexibility. I know it might feel, like, it allows you to cater it, you know, a bit, but not to the extent where I think it's really that discretionary. You know, it allows you to add some shrubbery or, you know, things like that. But to, you know, how much discretion do you have? It doesn't sound like you have a broad.
I mean, you're, you're restricted in saying no. So I mean, you could get the one that comes before you, and you have the whole neighborhood coming out saying they're currently renting both properties and it's a nightmare there. Please don't let them have a next one. And you, you would have to just condition it to try and protect them, but you would still be saying yes. For the most part. I mean, there's, it's, it's hard, because it's, it's always case-specific, and there's always different things, but that's why I guess I was a little bit, you know, just being careful that we understood what a special permit is and that, you know, that the statute says it shall usually be granted, and then you, you do conditions on it. It's, they're not often upheld in court if, if the, if the board denies one and it's appealed. But, I mean, there's, there's cases where it has been. It's, it's very case-specific. So I don't like making broad sweeping statements, but it's just something for the board to think of.
Leanne, just to be sure, the opt-in is completely opt-in. So if we wanted this XL or whatever, we aren't required to have that opt-in as an addition.
Okay, correct. Yep.
So any more comments on that? Can we do motions for the zoning ADU one bylaws? And then we'll kind of move.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's two for that. I just added the red of what we kind of talked about. So C would read at least one off-street parking space in accordance with the town's driveway regulations. In addition to that, required for the principal, single-family dwelling is required for each ADU, unless the ADU is located within zero or five miles from a transit station. Surfaces shall be paved or stabilized and non-erosive, otherwise approved by the building commissioner. All parking for ADUs should be off-street. So that's how it would newly read with Sam's language. And then further down, it was when rented. I mean, we had a discussion. I don't know if the board's still comfortable with that. And then you should make a decision about the applications that include a landscape plan or preferred.
I'm fine with that.
Because this is what the, the board will be voting on, just like omitting this section forty one thirty-four, that's a separate vote. But this would be how it reads. You've seen, this has been in your packet, change of the table of contents, the accessory uses. And then this is, will be how it would read. It actually might be helpful if you voted on the second ADU first, because I got to strike it from the table of contents for the next one. Just thinking procedurally. It'll just change it, and you should see it before you vote on it.
So before we make a motion, do you want to go down and see where everybody stands on it?
I think we should straw man.
Straw man, yeah.
On the forty one thirty-four second ADU?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a, I think we need to table that and workshop it. I don't think it's ready for prime time.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm okay with going that route in light of the fact that we've got this other option that we can explore and will give us a lot more flexibility, so I'm okay with that.
We should move it forward. We heard it the last public hearing. People were interested in having it.
I'm, I'm gonna say that we should table it. And so that we can develop it more. And I think because my, my opinion is really based on the fact that it is sort of a cookie cutter size-wise, and that's not what really seems to be in line with what the public wants. So I think our attention could be focused elsewhere. I want to wait for similar reasons. And, and I feel like if someone pressed me, like, why did you not provide that option to the public? I feel comfortable saying there's just so many unknowns that we're trying to learn more so that we can appropriately bring this to our town.
So we're talking about the permitting of the second. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm a no.
Okay, shall I take a motion on that one? Okay, oh, you have yours.
So I'm Melissa Duque, motion.
Well, the public hearing is still open, because you're, we're doing merger next, but there's no one here. Which is procedural, we're thinking about.
Oh, so closing the, oh, okay.
Maybe just take the straw vote and know where you're at, when we do, so we should close the public hearing after merger and then.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Maureen.
Yeah, thanks, Maureen. Okay, so then we did that. Yeah. And then I think for the first one, we know, we'll all take a straw on if we approve of the red lines that were made.
And just so you know, so if it ends up getting voted down, permitting a second ADU would obviously disappear in the use table. Enforcement would move to forty one thirty-four, because you know what the changes are.
Okay, I was happy with the red line changes that you made in there, including the when leaving the landscaping plan is preferred. It just notes that we've thought about it. It's not required, and it hopefully won't bore any, you know, worries and whatnot. So, yes, I'm okay bringing that forward.
Could I just ask, Leanne, so is that language in E, when rented? Is that strong enough language so that it does not prohibit someone from having a family member stay there as opposed to renting?
I believe so, and I think that the conversations that we had, the intent's clear. So it basically goes into our zoning interpretation file. Whenever we, we know that a board's made a decision on something, we, we write it up and we put it in an interpretation file. So if the situation arises down the line, so I've seen, I mean, we have ones in there from our building commissioners from decades ago, if they've done enforcement notice or something, just so we know what the intent was of the bylaw. It's very handy when it comes from the planning board as you're creating it, so that we don't have to second guess it later down the road. But it'd be a similar thing, that we put in what the intent of when rented means.
Can we put a comma after rented?
It's bothering me also.
Well, because then it, then it does relate to me, just.
So do you want to make a?
So, um. Why are we motioning to recommend the proposed amendment, amendment if none of us are?
Oh, we just have to reword it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Do not recommend, but she's a, so, so when we do motion, she's just asking, because the way it's worded is that it's recommended. We would just say motions to not recommend.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah. Or you could do it in the favor. You could say motion to recommend, and then whoever said no would be, it'd allow.
Yeah.
Because you would need a majority to pass.
Oh, I see.
So you could still say the positive and then vote no.
All right. But if I'm saying that I make a motion to, to recommend, but I'm not?
You're making a motion, but that's not your vote. You just made the motion.
Um, okay, so are we at that point?
So, no, because we have a public hearing open. We're doing a straw, so then we're gonna take this after the public hearing closes. So we were just talking about this first one with the red line, just to make sure everybody was okay with the way that it was drafted, with the red line edits, and I'm fine with it as drafted. So I think, okay.
I'm a no. We don't require a landscape plan?
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Okay. And so we'll go to merger?
We'll go to merger. This one is a quick. Okay, so basically just one slide on this. Lots held in common ownership that were undersized, used to merge for zoning purposes, pretty much rendered them unbuiltable for single-family home use. But now we are allowed through state law and actually required to update our zoning bylaws so that lots that are held in common ownership that conform to the existing requirements at the time they were created, and they're not less than ten thousand square feet with seventy-five feet of frontage that are located in a single-family residential district, they can be essentially unmerged for, for zoning purposes, and you could build a single-family home not to exceed a hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet, shall have at least three bedrooms, and it cannot be used as a seasonal home or a short-term rental. So that's the language from the state. So it basically gives residents a lot more latitude if they owned a lot next to their home in common ownership. We could potentially see an unmerger of some of those lots.
But it has to have frontage.
It has to have seventy-five feet of frontage.
Recognize road.
Correct.
Okay.
Public or private, yep.
Um, I don't think I have any comments.
You can just go to the actual bylaw, so you can see it. It's written. So this is non-conforming lots. This is our, our current section. Twenty-five sixty, which is adjacent to this, held in common ownership. And it just explains what was referenced on the slide. If you're ready to close the public hearing, then we can move on to the votes.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll move through our motions.
Okay. I feel like I should do second ADU first.
Second first, yeah, okay.
I guess I'm just still struggling with me motioning to recommend the proposed amendment when I don't, so I can.
You, you can vote to, to recommend it and then vote no. You're, you're not stating your, your feeling on it. You're just making a motion.
Great. I'm Melissa Duque, and motion to recommend the proposed amendment to Article Four, Section forty-one thirty-four and the table of contents for the purpose of allowing a second accessory dwelling unit and forward the language to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the town meeting warrant.
I, Anne McManus, second the motion.
All right, I'll do a roll call. I, Jennifer Rising, no, vote no.
I, Melissa Duque, and vote no.
I, Anne McManus, vote no.
I, Jeffrey Pecan, vote yes.
I, Nicole Willett, vote no.
I, Judy Burgess, vote no.
I Eileen Stas, vote no.
Okay, I'll move to this one. Um, I'm going to strike the excluding section forty-one thirty-four because as you pointed out, the table of contents that pushed up. So, okay. Uh, I Melissa Dugan, motion to recommend the proposed amendment to Article Four, Section forty-one thirty, the definition section and the table of contents for accessory dwelling units for the purpose of complying with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act of twenty twenty-four and forward the language to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the town meeting warrant.
I Anne McManus, second the motion.
Roll call. Um, I Jennifer Rising, yes, vote yes.
Melissa Dugan, yes.
Anne McManus, yes.
Jeffrey Picard, no.
I Nicole Bolett, vote yes.
Jeanne Burgess, yes.
I Eileen Stas, yes.
And then, um, I'm Melissa Dugan, motion to recommend the proposed amendment to Article Two, Section twenty-five fifty, non-conforming lots and the table of content, contents for the purpose of complying with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Affordable Homes Act of twenty twenty-four and forward the language to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion in the town meeting warrant.
I Anne McManus, second the motion.
Roll call, Jennifer Rising, yes. Melissa Dugan, yes.
Anne McManus, yes.
Jeffrey Picard, yes.
Nicole Bolett, yes. Jeanne Burgess, yes.
Eileen Stas, yes.
Great, um, so that's all set. There's no new business to discuss. Few agenda items under board discussion. Uh, the first is future planning efforts.
And I'll move quick because I know we're, we're getting late into the night, but I just wanted to update the board on some planning efforts that we've undertaken um, in the Planning and such Community Development Office now. Um, so we have contracted with Barrett Planning Group to look at our village core and potentially reestablish some mixed-use zoning in there. Um, so the, the core prior to zoning, basically, um, its inception was encouraged with commercial residential uses, um, a little bit more heavily dense than what is existing in the nineties. Um, that was all rezoned where mixed use is no longer allowed. Um, so as we've been going through the RFP process for the Town Hall Annex, we've been looking at uses and what is and is not allowed there. So, um, as part of, um, grant funding from the county, we were able to have some regional, um, housing services shared with multiple towns on Cape Cod. Uh, Barrett Planning Group was the consultant of choice, um, that, that won that award. So we have been working with Alexis at that, at Barrett Planning Group to start looking at it. So it's in its fairly inception stages, just to see kind of a, a history of the land use of the area. Um, it's, it's, some of it's in the floodplain, a lot of it's historic preservation. So kind of how do we maybe have a little bit more mixed use in there while still being, um, very conservative with, with density, with historic preservation and with resilient coastal design with being in the floodplain. So it's something that, um, we will bring up probably sometime this summer. And in conjunction with that, we've been asked, um, by management to start looking at zoning for the Route one thirty corridor. Um, as some of you were on the board back in twenty nineteen, when we underwent this effort with the Cape Cod Commission through, um, district technical local assistant grant funds. Um, we hired uh, an architecture firm out of Rhode Island, um, Union Studio that put on, um, public workshops and surveys to talk about density and talk about what form we would like to see it in, um, if we were to redevelop the area. So we're building on all of that work, um, to look at what we could potentially do when wastewater comes online. Um, and what zoning changes might the community like in that area when that comes? Just so that we can control the development and it doesn't control us when, when we get wastewater. Um, and we will build off that study. So we received forty thousand dollars this year from uh, the same funding source, district technical local assistant grant funding, or Delta for short. Uh, so the Cape Cod Commission will be working with us on that. I've asked them that once we have kind of a zoning, uh, a very baseline draft model for the village district, that, um, they include that when we do all of our public outreach. So this will be, you know, at, at least a year-long effort. It's nothing that I anticipate would go before town meeting anytime soon. But something to start thinking about and talking about and, you know, whether or not it's a good idea, what we really want to preserve, what the community wants to see, what areas we might want to see growth in, what areas we might not want to see growth in. So it's all really up for discussion and it's all in its infancy stages. But I just thought the board should kind of know some of the efforts that we're, we're looking at right now.
Thanks, that sounds exciting.
Um, the second discussion item is request for comment, uh, filed twenty-four dash O two for twenty-eight and thirty Salt Marsh Road Special Permit, Twenty-Eight Salt Marsh LLC to raise this current structure and rebuild, um, a slightly larger structure.
Yep, so basically, um, it's within the floodplain, so they need to, need to file for floodplain relief um, for construction over three hundred and one square feet. And then it's also non-conforming, so they needed some non-conforming relief. They're increasing the footprint of the structure by over thirty percent, which triggers that relief. Um, and they're exacerbating some non-conforming setbacks. They still meet the setbacks of their lot creation date. So it doesn't require variances, but they are intensifying on one side and lessening on the other.
Any comments to bring forward from any, any members?
If you don't want to be proposing any grade changes, um, erosion control is always an issue in that area, so it's something that would, would make its way into a decision.
Um, second request for comment item, number twenty-five dash O three, twenty-five meter drive special permit. Applicant Nurse, it was for, is it five dogs, for kennel permit?
Correct. So it's a personal kennel license. Um, they filed, they got a new dog this year. They previously had four. And they are filing, um, for their kennel license with the town clerk's office. They were notified that they need a special permit to have, um, more than four dogs. Um, so that will be going for the Board of Appeals. Um, in, in not their next meeting, but the one after. Um, I don't know if there's something in specific that you need to know about that, but it's basically just an additional dog to the household.
Any comments? Great, no comments to bring forward. Uh, last agenda item is other matters not reasonably anticipated. Although I wasn't here in the last meeting, so I don't know if Steve was with us. Were you with the last? Oh, you were. Oh, okay, because I was going to welcome you, so welcome again. Um, any other matters not reasonably anticipated?
I, I just wanted to say thank you to a couple of people who, um, had reached out and in case the board isn't, didn't know, um, I had to take some time off to take care of my mom. So I just, I missed a few meetings, um, and I really appreciate your kind words, Maureen, um, especially. Um, so thank you for understanding my absence, um, the past period of time. Getting back, getting back to work and everything now.
It's good to have you back.
Thanks. It's good. We got live and care, so that seems to be working out well. And, um, very unpredictable.
And then?
Yep. She's stubborn as hell. So she does not, she does not want to go anywhere but her home, and I get it. I'm doing everything I can to keep her there.
Oh, yes.
Take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All in favor?